All right. Okay, so we're gonna get this meeting started. This is gonna be a special session, budget workshop. It is September 10th, 2024, 6:30. I will start off with invitation prior to the meeting.
My special standing, Father. As we come together today to discuss important city matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. We are grateful for each person here for the opportunity to work together for our common goal. May our decisions be for the good of all of our citizens and city, and may our actions reflect the unity that we strive for. Father, we pray for our city staff, city crews, police and fire departments, and ask for your continued protection as they go about the work of our city. Thank you for your many blessings and watch over us as we go about our daily lives. We ask all of these things in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements tonight? Anybody, anybody?
Just one.
What's that?
Tomorrow morning at, starting at 7 o'clock, at our fire department. They're gonna have a tribute, a 9/11 tribute. And anyone who's invited to come, we've got fire departments, police departments, sheriff. We've got people coming from all over the county participating in this. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really cool thing. So if you wanna come see that, I know it's early, but we wanted to make sure that we honor those that were lost at the appropriate time that they were lost.
Start at 7:00, I advise you to get there early.
The veterans are also doing.
Yes.
They're at Park at 6:00 P.M. Okay. Any other announcements? Yes, ma'am?
We have Keep West to Walk, any beautiful citywide cleanup Saturday from 8 till noon or when the dumpsters are full. So we encourage our order recipients to come and dump their trash.
Thank you. You got anything?
I was gonna say please, no batteries, no paint. Refrigerators are getting harder to be able to take those. And tires.
Air conditioners.
Air conditioners are still up in the air. They did reject one can that had several.
I mean, the key to that is.
No construction materials.
If it's an appliance that has refrigerant, so any kind of freon refrigerant, there's an EPA thing connected to that, that we can't take those in unless the refrigerant is completely pulled out of it. There, we don't really, we're not gonna have the people with the expertise down here to be checking that.
Do we also have the adopter highway on the 21st?
21st? Okay. Robin, we got that coming through.
Challenge will come through that same day. There's a lot of stuff going on that day.
21st gonna be a pretty busy day. I'm on the highway here in West Walk.
Also, just a reminder, movies in the park along the 21st. And gospel festivals canceled.
Yes.
Yes. All right. No more announcements, we'll move on to number five, which is gonna be citizens input related to agenda items. I think, do we have? Yeah? Is somebody here? No? Okay. Cause I was gonna move up the non-related as well to go ahead and give that person that opportunity. So, okay. All right. No citizens input related to the agenda items. And, and I mean, honestly, we could do non-related if we wanted to, since I was gonna extend that opportunity anyway.
Is that kind of this?
Yeah, we discussed it.
Oh.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to number six, which is our budget workshop. These are all of our, we've listed every one of our funds in this. I think mainly tonight, we're gonna be discussing general fund and EDC, was it? For the most part, and I think y'all may have all of them here. I'm not sure what are you set up here. I have. Okay, so you, so they're all here. Did anybody have any questions? Was anybody able to get with Mary through the week and ask any questions? I think the small funds we were pretty, pretty set on, all the smaller ones. There was a question on EDC.
Resolved.
And, and that was resolved with Pam. I know the general fund was one we were working on last, and.
Finished PD, still working our way in.
Right. We were, we were at PD at the end of PD.
Are we gonna hold off on park events tonight?
I'd like to, we can try to get through most of that if we can do it. Did y'all have any questions? That came to the Parks Department? I'm sorry.
You on Park or Public Park?
I'm a little bit ahead of.
In Public Works first.
Public Works?
Yep.
It's in my, in my neck and exercise. What page is it on? No, I saw it, but where did it go?
Page 11.
On the back.
Back side.
Do you have any more copies of this?
They're all good.
I know. It's been a great effort. There've been several, several people working in conjunction with Mary to try to pull some things out of here. The only thing that I know of that was not, and I'm not saying every single line was touched and changed, and if they were changed, I mean lowered, right? On, on, not the income side, but as far as on the expenditures, almost every line was touched at some point in time. The only thing that wasn't touched was our allocations that we have from the city, our three allocations that we have. I appreciate how much the whole team here has worked together. It's, it's been nice to watch. There's, you know, there's times when I know that Mary's had her nose stuck in this thing all the way as far as she could. And the other girls in the office and everybody else just pulls together to try to help do things to keep the wheels turning for the things that she should be doing with her regular job responsibilities. Y'all wanna start at the top of this one, Public Works? I mean, at the moment, we only have one salary coming out of there. Is that right? Or remember?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So if you guys want, I can go ahead and address the elephant in the room, which is street material, road material.
Right, it's really the.
I mean, it's really where it's at.
Yeah, biggest thing, so it's 174, 121 is where it starts. I'm gonna see what we budgeted and.
So the first thing I'd like to say to that is, is, you know, we still have not collected any HOA funds that were donated to contribute to roads. We're working on that now, and we're also not finished. But we are finished with one of the HOAs that we still plan to collect from, which will bring that total down some. The other part to that is, is you can drive around this town and see the roads that we've done and how much that material really covers at the cost that you're seeing right now. So the price of the material, you know, in the past years would go up maybe once a year, a little bit each year. And over the past few years, it's gone up anywhere from two to three times a year. So the mayor's tasked me with getting representatives from both places down here so we can meet with them and find out, are they still ensuring that we're pitting back in off to the county? And the second part to that is, is why are these rate increases happening so many times in a year? The last one, we weren't even notified about.
Yeah, cause what my plan is, is to get these people down here and get them to agree to a rate, right? If it's.
For a year.
If it's $5, if it's $5 more a ton than what we're paying right now, but you're gonna guarantee, you're gonna guarantee us that rate throughout the entire year because we, I mean. Right, and, and we haven't been able to get that yet. So, so we had to take a shot in the dark on these things, so we're probably gonna miss the mark next year because we don't have any complete idea. We're, we're kinda guesstimating what the increase could be, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to get anybody in front of us or give us that answer yet. But my plan is for them to give us a locked-in price that we will have in writing, so we'll at least kinda know. And that way, that'll give us a, a good way to plan, right? Because right now, our planning got shot. Soon as we started getting these price increases, the planning got shot.
Right, because we got them long after the budget was created.
So is that 70,000, is that on the low side?
I think we're, you know, we said this last year, and then, of course, they hit us with two more increases after the one that we put in the budget. So if you look at the amount of roadwork last year and this year, and we're not done this year, that's the sad part. You know, we're trying to make sure that we stay within that five, six-year window of touching every road in this town in our goals to get to blacktop on every road. Now, we're a long ways away from that, but we've made some good strides in the right direction. And this year, we believe when we're done, we will have touched all the major roads. So we're hoping that next year, we will be able to come in at budget. Now again, if they pull two or three more increases on us.
The answer to your question is yes.
Yes.
That's, the answer, you were looking for a yes or no answer. Your answer is yes.
I'm sorry, that was a long window.
No, it's okay.
It is, it is on, it is on the low end. No, and I appreciate the explanation too. I just wanna make sure that it's very clear to everybody that yes, that answer is yes. I mean, we would have loved to have raised it more.
Right.
But you can't, I mean, you can only squeeze a turnip so hard, right? I mean, sorry. And then I promise you, everybody's knuckles are still white from squeezing.
Are there some grants that we can apply for? I hope that that might.
I'm currently looking into that. There are some grants out there that are, from what I understand, harder to achieve than a grant to, you know, update your system, your water sewer system. But there are a couple out there. I would also add, on the contract labor side, the reason why you see an increase on that is we are starting our ditches and our drainage. And that's probably the hottest topic in this town right now, is drainage. So we're gonna get started on that, so we need to make sure we compensate for that. The rest is pretty much self-explanatory.
There wasn't a lot of change on much of anything else. I'll, you left that park restroom money that we put in there for the repair of the doors, we didn't touch that either.
Have you moved on to park or you still?
No, I'm, I'm just talking about general fund. I'm just talking about this budget on this page. So I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that.
170?
Yeah. It's 178, 114. We, we didn't touch that either.
About 174, 131, street signs?
We did touch that one.
We did, but we're, we're, we're trying to make a much better effort this year because we have a lot of street signs that may be replaced.
Yeah, we did, we did lower that. Trying to, trying to pull a little bit from, I mean, cause y'all know where we're at in our last meeting. I mean, we were so upside down.
Yeah.
It was, I thought it was gonna be unseeable. Well, it did. I mean, really and truly, in public works, the streets was the only smoking gun, if you will. If you look at 174, 120, 122, I mean, you look at our actuals, and that, that actual is up to date today.
As of all the bills that have come into me.
I mean, if that doesn't give you a pretty clear picture, I mean, I'll be honest with you, if it were clearly my decision or if it was Michael's decision, you would probably see, you would probably see in, in those two items, you'd probably see $250,000 between, between the two. And that would, and that would give us a little bit better effort. Right now, the effort is.
It'd be a lot.
It's almost unseeable, right? I mean, that's, that's the consensus that we get from every other citizen, all of our neighbors. I mean, it's, it's unseeable, and I get it. That's tough, tough feat. I mean, when you look at the total for public works, it's not a lot of money. Right? And, and I mean, yeah. When you put it that way, I mean, that's, that's really, that's our tax dollars, right? When you, when you look at it that way. When, when you look at all the budgets within the city, that's, that's not the tax dollar. Cause water sewer is completely separated from tax dollars. And I, I think that's, that's where it's not always clear with everybody. And, and it was including myself. I didn't see it that way. I was like, dang. Where's the money? And that's, that, that sum of money, I mean, we can put, we could put that out for people that are still working sitting up here. We could put salaries together and pull that out real quick.
Right.
You know, and kinda, that's astonishing when you look at that and say that. That you can put household money and make this budget not really worth much money. The park, like I said, the park didn't really change much. I don't know if we took anything out of work.
Well, there was only one.
Yeah, so there wasn't.
Yeah, I think utilities, you can't do nothing to that.
Very simple.
There was only one that we wanted to remove, but we wanted to add it to another line item.
We steered away from park.
Yeah. There was, there was a lot that we could adjust.
No. We've got 11 minutes left in this workshop, so we can, we can keep moving if you guys want.
We finished PD? Did we change with that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we.
I'm there. I put my green line at the bottom of it.
Oh, you know what we did to disclose with PD is really our changes.
Oh, yes.
The part-time officer was taken out.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately. But what I'll say to that, the conversation that we all had as a group and talking about these things when I was able to get up here and work with everybody. Look, let's not make it all grim. Let's see what the year starts doing. You know, tax dollars may surprise us. There may be some things that happen within our city that brings more income, whether it's more building and permits. There's things that could happen. Our city could have some things that shake out that could, could allow us to make those changes throughout the budget year, right? We could come back and do a budget amendment and say, look, this and this has taken place. This has allowed us to do X, Y, and Z. Here's our budget amendment and run that across the council table. But what I have asked everybody to do was to be, I mean, and I'm not saying, saying this by saying that it hasn't been done, but I've asked everybody to be very diligent. And, and Michael's already been doing this the past couple months with a few of his people, is teaching them P and L stuff, making them carry P and Ls. And it's, you know, people that he has enrolled that, that can affect spending. But I think as a team, if it's more upfront and personal, that we can, we can try to monitor this stuff closer and maybe, you know, turn a nickel into a dime, if you will. That's all we can try to do. And, and I would love to see us get that part-time officer. I'm sure most everybody here would. You know, I mean, with more police presence is, is a good thing. So we'll just have to see what happens throughout the year.
So the fact that it not go down without the extra part-time?
On the police?
Yeah.
You made that change, didn't you?
Should've gone down like $2,900.
31, 455, man, 91. 31, 455, 91.
So it's, one of the names, 49, and we're gonna change. I'll go back and look at it.
Yeah, cause I showed the same on both.
It is exactly, Mary. So we need to mark that, make sure it's changed.
You said it's around $2,900?
Yes.
Yeah. A decrease.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you changed the employee insurance.
Yep.
It was $2,936.72. So it brings the total of that 1 to 28, 519 and 19 cents.
28, 519.
19.
Any other questions on the PD?
Well.
Hey, Peter, do we pay that yearly?
It might be taken out.
I'm just curious when it's gonna be paid versus what we found out today.
I don't have a real sense of it. That was a good call then, when I got it. Make sure you got the same call.
I was, I was loud.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we've already got, we already.
I know.
Hey, that one's like. No, we're Peter Town. Radio, we're Peter.
We've already, oh no, we've already paid it.
It's 1800.
19, 25. What it was this year, the actual, last year was 2100.
Public Works is not that long anymore, are you?
No.
Well, we still be able to use the old system where it's gone.
Well, thank you.
No. So then, when is it officially over? Here soon?
It's 2024, we got these little things?
Once we get the regular sale.
Yeah.
And it's pretty over.
Yeah, they're like, man, they're just not gonna go live.
Okay. Yeah.
You want to pay regular? Tech order, big foster.
No.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question just out of curiosity. Do we still, are we still contracted with Bureau of Land Management?
We are. Oh, yeah.
And they give all our inspections?
They do.
Yeah, that's, when you look at the, that's the.
Contract.
Contract, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big number. I thought, oh, we must have been.
Yes.
And we have to.
I don't know, I mean, if you, if you turn, if you're gonna go back into water sewer, I think we hammered it all the way out already. Unless there's somebody else that has some questions that you can, that are found. General fund was our big question. That was the one that we were stuck on. Does he make any questions? We, you didn't quite, come on, give us something. No?
No.
Okay. Yes, that's all, that's all I can get. No, no other budget questions for this workshop? Anybody out there in the crowd got a question? Cause you can talk. This is a budget workshop, all a team effort. Sorry, I got one of my guys at work calling me. Okay.
We covered it.
So we offered citizens input non-related in the beginning. So that'll take us to number eight, the budget workshop.
Motion.
Chris made a motion to adjourn. I get a second, got a second from Robin. Got votes on him.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Motion passed across the table. Okay, so we've got just a couple minutes.
Two minutes, Travis.
All right, guys, so we're back live. Uh, we're going to start a regular session meeting again. This is, uh, September tenth and twenty-twenty-four and seven PM is what we call this meeting. If, uh, if we could, go ahead and do a vacation and play the week again.
Precious heavenly Father, we come together today to discuss important city matters. We ask for your guidance and wisdom. We're grateful for each person that is here tonight and for the opportunity to work together for our city towards a common goal. May our decision be for the good of all of our citizens and city, and may our actions reflect the unity that we are striving for. Father, we pray for our city staff, city crews, police, fire department, and ask for your continued protection as they go about their work protecting our city. Thank you for your many blessings and watch over us as we go about our family lives. We ask all of these things in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
And allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, you left it in there for Calisthenics. You know, like if you're wearing a, if you have a smart watch, you got one more standard. I don't know about y'all, but sometimes I'll be working my watch, so it's time to stand up. I think I've got work. All right. Announcements, I think we went through most announcements while ago during the workshop. Did anybody leave anything out on announcements or, or want to bring them up back up?
Kevin, if I could,
Yes, ma'am.
talk about the community-wide cleanup this coming Saturday from eight o'clock to noon or until when the dumpsters are full at the wastewater treatment plant on Rabbit Cove Road. Uh, no paint, no, um, hazardous chemicals, no tires, one mattress set per household, uh, no refrigerators, no freezers. If, if anybody has any questions, they're welcome to call me. I know it's on the website.
And no batteries.
And no batteries, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, we appreciate you guys doing that stuff. Okay? So we're going to move to number five, citizens input related to the agenda items. Do you have any news? I don't see any different places, so I think we're probably in the same situation as the workshop. Okay? So we're going to move on to number six, consent agenda items. Um, so these are all of our consent agenda items, items A through M. We're going to go through all, I mean, y'all want to go through those things or are y'all good with them?
One minute.
Okay.
Motion we approved the consent agenda items, A through M. I'll say.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Leon. You got votes on that?
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Robert Myers.
Chris Burkett.
I do want to say I appreciate you guys. Amanda's not here, but I told her that working on those minutes, you've gotten really good, I think. We're not, we're not out of the board. We up there.
They approved that.
Great job on that. Okay, so let them move us to new business. Item A, discussion, interaction, update regarding the park committee. Ms. Jack?
Yes, um, park committee. So I know that was an exciting, uh, addition to the city. Um, unfortunately, it was sort of a non-starter. We had only four volunteers, um, in addition to me. Um, it was two couples. Um, and usually when couples volunteer together, if they are not available to volunteer, they, they do not, they're not available together, if that makes any sense. So one couple unfortunately had to drop out because of, um, some unfortunate family urgency. Um, and just me and another couple is not enough people to make a successful, uh, committee. Um, I had, uh, called for volunteers. I had a couple in addition, I had a couple, uh, extra interested parties that unfortunately just didn't go anywhere. So, um, the, we need to decide what we're going to do with the park committee. Um, I will say this, uh, if there is a positive that comes out of a negative, this is what it is. Um, we looked at the park with some fresh eyes and, uh, talked to the, um, SRA. SRA, thank you very much, on what we could do to get some money for the receding shoreline. And they gave us some really good information and some, um, action items on things that we really need to do to make the park better. So looking at it with fresh eyes, we've talked, uh, um, Kevin, um, uh, Mike and I, sorry.
I'm the chair.
Um, I was thinking Chris over here on my left, and then now Chris in addition with the fire department, um, have been talking about how we can make the park better. So in future iterations of what a park committee could be, or as traveling, um, organizations come through and want to hold, um, events, they will have a new and refreshed park that is getting some extra love and attention. So with that said, Mike and his team have just been doing a lot of work with the park. Um, I'm going to take to my computer instead of doing, um, actual events. I'm going to take to my computer and start doing lots of fundraising and see what we can do in terms of working together to make the park pretty, uh, nicer so that when we do have future iterations of whatever a park committee could be, um, they will want to host things in our park and be very proud of it. So, um, fortunately, I've got that news about the park, but it is, the committee, it is what it is. Um, but our efforts are not going to stop. We're still going to continue to make the park great. Any questions on that? I was wrangled there for a second.
So there won't be a park committee this time?
Correct, we just did not have enough interest to get it going. That's very unfortunate.
Council, have any questions?
You got it as discussed, okay.
Well, I mean, we're going to need some sort of a vote to say that we're committed, I don't know, we're going to even store the park committee on shelf or we say we want to do away with it as a council or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to putting it on the floor again if, if there are other volunteers out there that want us, you know, really help take the ball and run. But, you know, we did a pretty loud campaign. I got on Facebook, I shot videos, I made pleas to the town, and all in all, we have four people that, um, force is said and done by the, by the end of the day.
So the reason why we have a discussion or take action is because the council voted to develop a park committee, so the council's going to have to make a decision.
Vote on just table it and review it each month?
The council can vote however they want, however they want to vote. It's, it's.
Like each month or three months or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I would like to see what we're going to do with raising funds and get to the place where, um, the SRA will give us money with the efforts that they've outlined for us. Um, and then I want to be open to if someone wants to come and, and do something that they can get our support and I can get involved at, at that level. Um, so if we just want to pause it for now and sort of revisit it every quarter, that might be a good idea.
Make a motion, we put the park committee on hold for three months.
For every, just to review it or?
Review it in three months.
So we want that on the, so basically we'd want the park committee to be brought up and every, and every three months.
Just keep us updated if you start getting somebody that's interested.
Yeah.
Put that on a calendar to, so you made a motion for that? Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Robin.
Leon Myers.
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Passed across the table. All right, so new business, item B, discussion and or take action creating community development department, moving code enforcement and permits to community development department. I'm going to kind of look forward to.
Yeah, um, and actually part of this is.
C as well.
Yeah, I would say we.
So B and C sort of go together. It's discussion and or take action on creating a building standards committee. Um, so hopefully everybody kind of sees a relation there, but those, those two things sort of do, they'll go together.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll have to kind of go on them separately, but you can explain B and C, I think.
Yeah, so I ran into a building standards commission in, actually the city of Conlar, when I was dealing with them. In general, the city has got some issues with, y'all got some abandoned properties, uh, some dilapidated, really badly dilapidated properties, and we're sending notices and we're sending notices, but we've got where it may be in the name of an estate, but they're a long deceased, the kids live who knows where, and nobody's dealing with these properties. And the building standards, if commission is what it should be, is a, uh, is, would be created by the city and it would, we can set it up where it would be. At first, I would say monthly and then kind of go to a quarterly, but it would allow us to streamline the process of getting these properties repaired and dealt with. If something needs to be demolished, if something needs actual, more action items and more accountability. The benefit is, right now, the structure is you send people notices, you bring them into court. At some point, you have to file a district court suit if you have to go through a condemnation process. Okay? And that's more expensive for the city. The building standards commission would allow our code enforcement, and that's kind of what we're talking about, moving code enforcement out of PD. She's already doing a lot of, I said she, but right now Shannon is your code enforcement. Okay? Yeah, she is your, and, and this would, the vision would be that she would be that department when it started, but she would spearhead starting the commission and she'll write citations for, she'll write notices for, um, yard signs, door hangers, things like that. But then those people, if they ignore, there's a series of steps. If they ignore this, then they get called for the commission. If they ignore that, and then we kind of go to the next step. But we could actually clean it up ourselves, and it's a ninety to a hundred and twenty day process from start to finish. If, like I said, they'll get letters, action items, things that, under the IPMC, in which they have to do in order to fix whatever the issue is. There's some structures I know we've had, like fires, and they're just letting the dilapidated building fall into worse repair, and it's a hazard, but we can't get anybody. And so that would allow us to go in, fix the problem, and then put a lien on the property. If they further ignore, uh, we could, we would, at that point, then we could start an April closure process, which we've talked about. If there's, who is doing our tax suits right now, we could actually kind of contract with them. I'm pretty sure, we're talking about more about that. But to recoup the cost of the demolition, basically.
Who would comprise of this commission?
Yeah, so city council would set up, who wants how many members? Uh, typically, and I want to say the Congress.
The Congress is five.
Yeah, I think they did five, but I've seen this mission is seven. City would decide who they wanted to be on it. You guys can put council members, wouldn't be all council members, but let's say you want to say, make the requirement, at, at all times, you have one or two council members on the seat, and you guys would rotate out whoever that was going to be. Uh, and then people could also, we take the opportunity to have, if there's going to be interest in the community, if somebody who wants to sit on it, this now would be a good time to submit an inquiry. Hey, put my, put my name in the hat, let's start looking at, at doing this. And, and for clarity, if code enforcement says, or our new department, if we create that, community development department, it is hard to say, I will struggle. They do.
I need feedback.
Yeah, uh, if, if, if she recommends something, the commission does not have to go with that. They can, the person would have, it's a semi judicial process, okay? They come in, if they wanted to argue and say, hey, these are the reasons we haven't been able to complete this, this is what's going on, the commission can at that time say, all right, we'll give you an extra thirty, sixty days, but you got to come back and tell us why you haven't or what's going on. But, but this will move the ball forward on a lot of properties that we're having a lot of problems with. Um, additionally, like I said, once, if, if, for example, the commission comes down with an order that says, yes, this property needs to be demolished or, or we've got to do something, they have a thirty day window which they can appeal to an actual district court. It's very, it doesn't happen very often, but there are, are appellate rights. People can say, gosh, we were winter, we were summering in Spain and we just didn't get any of these notices. So that, there is a, a way for people to still appeal if they do not agree with the commission's findings. It is not removing that process. And it, and if they did appeal, it would actually kind of start as a, what we call the no vote from scratch. It starts with that. Like I said, there, this process, it is under, like I said, it's local government two fourteen with some, chapter two fourteen with some crossover from chapter fifty-four, which gives you the authority to do this. Um, I started talking to Shannon about it because I actually, like I said, I ran into it. In fact, I've been with somebody on it. But I looked at this structure, and I thought, this is actually a really good idea for you guys in particular. So I started bringing it up to her about something I wanted to look at doing. Um, I know, and this, talking about moving, creating this community development department, right now, so much of what code enforcement is doing is city work. And most, I, I see a lot mostly code enforcement, it's not on the PD side. It's, it's really in the city administrative position. Uh, and I, I do not want from code enforcement, I don't want that to look like a PD action. PD is coming in and condemning a property. That's just, that's just not really a good look for the city, and I don't think it's a good idea. So that's why we started talking about moving code enforcement out of PD, and then she's already doing permits, and honestly Shannon's doing a lot of ordinance writing and stuff like that. So she's doing a lot of just city work. So let's create this whole, like whole branch, she still reports to this community development department, will still report to the city directly to.
The city section.
So would this commission be under the city's umbrella?
Uh-huh. It kind of think of it like a legal issue, right, arising, right? Okay. And you can kind of think of it as like if you were creating a P M C for, from scratch.
Then if we were to tear down a house and somebody come back six months later and say, you know, I didn't give you permission to do that, or, you know, some kind of legal.
Right, so that's why we create the commission the way we do. And there are, like I said, there are really set guidelines that we will send. This is the first notice that happens, this is the second one. You've got X, you know, it has to lay out how many days they've got to correct. And like I said, let's say it is a little bit like burned structures that's been up and abandoned. You know, you start with, here's your door sign, here's your, here's your posted sign that says you've got, hey, this has been a problem for this amount of time, you've got thirty days to correct it. Next notice is, hey, you have ignored this, we're going to give you an extra ten day extension, a court at fourteen day extension. There are certain where you can go under, but we could give them more, just depending on what we want to do. Um, but like I said, from start to finish, uh, then it's, we're sending you for a hearing, come report to the commission, talk about, and then you get, the commission will at that point, most of the time, go, all right, we'll give you X amount of time to remediate this problem. And it's always, these are under the IPMC, this is the code, this is the sections that you have violated, and you list out exactly what the violations are. This is what's gone wrong, you're, you know, this is unsuitable and it's unsafe.
Would these members have to be vetted like other committees and boards and things with the city? I mean, come before the council for approval? Would we have to do that, or is it something that, that you just put together?
I think, yeah.
That's, that's why we were talking about it now, is that it is council discretion. And we want to talk about, first of all, how many members do we want? I think five is a good idea because I do think, I mean.
An odd number.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, always an odd number. Um, but also kind of to your point, you have a hard time getting people involved with the parks. So we want to make sure it's not too many that it's on, keep people on. What kind of requirements would we want? What my, my vision is that we will not have if, like completely formally created until probably January, but I want to start talking about what we're doing. What I do want to do is, because I know we're talking about budget, and right now, already you guys have got code enforcement on its little island with a separate budget, even though it's been inside PD. So at this, it seems like a good time while we're dealing with budget before we finalize that to say, all right, let's just go ahead and pull code. let's just go ahead and pull code, create the new department, give that its new title, and then we'll work in the intervening months to get what you guys want to do exactly for the building standards commission.
So we would move that into general fund, is what we're saying, essentially.
Yes.
So it'd be, say, it'd be just like Public Works is in general, with PD and everything else.
Correct.
And if I'm seeing this the right way, this is gonna evolve, right? It's starting out that we're going to do this and handle this from within code, right? Code is going to be under this-
Community.
Community Development Department.
And my thought is, it's going to be code, it's going to be, like I said, permits, and she's, I mean, right now, she's already doing some miscellaneous. But, but that is what that department would, would handle. And, I mean, I think, you're already, you've already been handling permits for a long time, but there's also been meetings with developers and stuff like that. So a lot of the inspections and stuff like that is going to get spearheaded through that community.
I already see this well.
I know, yeah, so she's already handling a lot of what this job actually is, so it's not going to be a big change, except-
Just get some help.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I meant by it evolving, right?
Yes.
It's going to evolve, so.
And like I said, I, I don't want anybody to think that the goal here is with this, this commission, is that we're going out just witch hunt, that is not what it is.
We actually have some properties where you can literally stand in the road and you can see clean through the house. There's not even walls, but we cannot get good signs on these properties.
She sent, she has sent, I've seen them, letters to mortgage companies. And mortgage companies should really care that they're going to lose their interest, but we can't get you for an ocean. So I, like I said, this is a way to deal with these properties. So my, my thought is that at the outset, it would be, this commission will be meeting more often, but that by and large, as we get things handled, and truthfully, as people, as some of the people start to see that we're serious about, you cannot leave hazardous structures just completely ignored in the town, that will start getting people to be a lot more responsive. I, I, my goal and my hope is that, and I generally believe this, even when we're talking about code enforcement for ordinance violations, I, we don't want to take things from people, we want them to fix it. But there, but we may end up with a few structures where we're going to have to show people we mean it. You have to fix it, we want you to fix it, we're happy to help you, are happy to give you time to do it, but you have to meet us and do it.
Okay, so if I am understanding this correctly, number one, it's just an administrative thing moving into, into the fold of general fund. But then also, it is a benefit that we have with the state, where we can form this committee, where we expedite. So right now, we are handling, she, Shannon posts, does-
Certified letters.
Certified letters, all the things, all the things. And then we have to go through the court, which could take a year and a half and longer. This gives us the power to handle it internally, and we either fix the property ourselves, so we can put a lien on it. So where would funds come from that?
Yeah, and I want to say, we've talked about this in the past, that Shannon did have a, like a small demolished budget, and that would kind of come with her.
Okay, because, because like, does that obligate us to fix properties, number one, because then we don't have, okay? And then, number two, it is, we of course, like you said, want them to fix, keep their property, but we can just go the foreclosure angle much quicker?
Yeah, well, we can fix it much quicker, because one of the big benefits, because some of it is not going to take, I mean, some of it's not always going to be a big expense to demolish, right?
Yeah.
And we can put a lien down, some of it's going to be, we've got some junk on properties too that need to be pulled off, so we can do haul off, and that'll be, that's not as expensive. We don't have to automatically start a foreclosure process, and that's, that's what I'm, we can put the lien down and say, we'll give people time to make, but that will draw interest. But with our tax group that helps do the collection for tax, delinquent taxes and stuff like that, we can contract with them, and they will take a piece of the collection that they will deal with.
What I want to make sure and highlight here, here's, when she's saying fixing, she doesn't mean that we go remodel that. Fix the situation.
Yeah.
And the situation would be, this house or building, whatever, even if it can be proper. This could be a property that's jumped up and the grass is five foot tall. It's not always going to be a, a structure there, but fixing, the word fix means make this meet the standards and, and of what is safe for the community.
Yeah.
That's, and so I keep getting a hand up, sorry, during this time of our, of our meeting, we can't really banner back and forth with, with the-
I've had a meeting about this before, and one of the things that may want to be made aware of real quick, is that they tried to do this before, what she's talking about, and what they ran into is, the city did not want to take the risk for the insurance, because once they came, the lien became permanent on the structure of the property, they became the owner technically of the property, and they took the risk, and everybody's going out there, and got hurt, and didn't have insurance on it, that was personally. Second thing, they also tried to go back and take dilapidated properties, and said, okay, we're going to go in there and clean them up, we're going to put a lien against the property, okay, we'll take the money, once the property is sold, if they forfeit just for whatever, and we'll pay for what we have done to the property. That didn't work out as well either, because they ran into, like I said, a lot of people had died and test paid the wheels and stuff, and couldn't get a hold of them, you know, so there's a wide range of-
I don't anticipate running into the problems you're describing, truthfully.
So in the, and you say other cities that have adopted this, what kind of results have you seen?
Well, that's what I'm saying, because I actually ran into it, because I, yeah, I got hired to defend one. Somebody bought one that had been condemned, and we wanted to go back and ask the commission to rescind their demolition order, which was successful, actually, because I was able to file the appeal. Though it was, it is successful, and it was really a case of the property owners just flat ignored the city. They just didn't want to deal with it, and they kind of tried to do the ostrich, stick their head in the sand, and it didn't work. So it does move the ball, but it's, they started in February, sending them notices, and by June, there was a demolition order, but they just absolutely ignored it. Now, they had, let me tell you that they had already had some other precursor letters and things, but February is the start of the, here's our statutory obligations being met to start this process. And, and ultimately, like I said, we were successful, they ended up agreeing to reevaluate it once the new owner came in and said, here's what I'll do to fix it. Great, because again, that's what the city wants. They don't want to deal with the demolition, they didn't want to deal with putting a lien on it, and having to try to deal with all of that, they wanted the property fixed.
Did they see a lot of improvement citywide, as far as other property?
You know, I, I'm not certain about that, I can't speak for them, but I do know they have, I know that, I'm close to that city, I live somewhat near, and now I know that they do, they've made a big push in general, because they've had a lot of dilapidated structures, and so they've been looking that way, so. They need more single family homes in the area that aren't rental properties to college kids, to be truthful, so that's been, that's been a thing.
Any other questions from anybody?
Basically, just give you a, a strong arm over it.
It does, it's really to just push forward, what does it, I don't anticipate us having to actually-
Sounds like HOV.
No, and I, I want to be clear, sometimes, sometimes if, if one called collection, if we can't, we won't necessarily always recover the entire cost if we get into where we have to do a foreclosure thing, and I'll be honest. But I, I don't, my goal is not that we would have to do that every time, true. Just because the net of, when the collection project's-
So this motion needs to look like something of-
But if it goes through full foreclosure, then that becomes city property.
Yeah, we could take it, subject to the lien, but they would also, most likely what they will do is they'll sell it immediately, like tax, like what you see tax sale, so the city wouldn't necessarily take it, they would actually sell it on the market. Okay. Which is fine, we just want to be paid back for it. Now, if, and I, I will tell you, and this is something we can talk about, because like I said, we're not ready, we're going to create an ordinance for you that creates it, establishes it, and, but part of this is, I want to talk to y'all about, what do we, do we want to go forward with that? Do we want to do, how many members do you guys want to look at putting in place? But like I said, our target is really to get it started and kind of ramped up more through January, okay?
So what kind of motion do you think we'd be looking forward to have?
Well, as to-
For the committee?
Yeah, I don't, you-
We need to move code-
Yeah, you'll, that's the-
That's step one.
That's what I'm saying, so the motion would be moving all those items into the right place and giving you the go ahead to just move, move forward with this, and, and then we, we're going to need to probably look at our next agenda to start trying to form or put together this commission.
I think right now, it's a call to the community to, let's see, who, who wants to actually be on it? Do you guys want to make requirements as to, if we have at least one council member, two council members, things like that? So this is a time for you guys to talk to me as well about what you want to do.
Can an employee be on it?
Yeah, I think we could do that.
I mean, I don't think they'd want them-
No, we don't.
-to be in it, but I, I wouldn't mind there being an employee, like maybe, you know, maybe one of the workspeople or a police officer, I mean, I don't know.
I don't-
They don't want police involved.
It's not that we don't want, it's just that I don't want, I don't want, I don't want it to look bad for y'all that the community thinks the PD is out there trying to take properties. If that's just, that can cause blowback for y'all that's unnecessary, you know?
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't know if it'd look bad if there was an employee involved, maybe a-
And are the rules that we would follow just-
Yeah, I think that, the more that I think about it, probably employees would get that idea. Then you're going to get them started, don't you?
Jennifer, I'll, I'll tell you what, start with Shannon, and I, no, she, she will not be, she'll be making reports to the committee, commission, like that's what her goal, his job will be, is that these are, you know, she'll be having the documentation, these are the letters that were sent, this is where we're at with this, this is what I'm asking for, okay?
And how do we not slow her down, because she's got her own, you know, she does her thing, and, you know, how would a, we wouldn't want a committee to slow her down what she's doing if she's having to report to the committee for instance.
Well, what, the committee's going to meet at set times that we kind of designate, and she's going to go in and say, I've done everything statutorily required of me, and this is what I'm asking the committee to do. And the person is going to be at, hopefully, at the committee and saying, I need more time to fix this, I haven't intentionally, you know, whatever their reasoning is for not having fixed the problem. And so the, and I don't want the commission to just do exactly what she says, okay? I mean, that's, that's why we have an independent commission. It's so the city is making a request and a report to, and the commission is saying, okay, well, it's really not that bad. Or, yeah, let's give them, let's give them another forty days, let's just bring them back at the next meeting. That, that's what we want, okay? So if the commission does slow it down, all we're saying is, we've done what was statutorily required, we've met all these requirements, and this property is still a problem. At that point, like I said, the commission will make its order one way or the other, okay?
I think you guys will see a lot of interest in this committee. So when the commission makes this order, is that, that to be approved by the council, right?
No, the commission will actually, will file that in the property records. It'll be, if there's, like I said, there's a demolition order in particular, you file that in the property records, giving you the authority at that point, because the next thing will be a lien for whatever the, the fix cost is.
Will the-
This is a very important stage.
I know, but will the property owner have the right to bring it to the board of the council for board to get them up?
No, when they-
To appeal their decision, or?
They know what they can do, they, at that point, they file a different court, yeah. But like I said, this is, they, at this point, they'll receive four to five notices, and then we'll have a hearing. You know, it won't be-
If I'm seeing this correctly, and I'm speaking wrong, this is, this is setting a stone in place for another branch of our city, a growth, a growth within our, within our city, okay? So, so kind of like in our, in, in my business, I mean, we've done the same thing since, so it's, it's, it's like expanding from within our city is what we're doing, but this is, it's, it's not going to happen completely all this year. I mean, my, again, stop me if I say something that doesn't seem right. But what this will have at some point is, just like the Public Works Department, or just like the Water Sewer Department, this is going to become a department at some point, that you're going to have code and permits, and the building commission's, whatever, Standards Committee and all that.
Like I said, they're-
That's all going to be a department at some point, I'm guessing, outside of the committee.
No, the building standards, like commission, they're based, that is going to be like you would have a P and Z board.
Okay, but what were you calling this department?
The Community Development Department is what we're talking about, code enforcement, permits.
Right, Community Development Department will become something like Public Works.
That's a separate one, yeah.
Water Sewer, like Police Department. Basically, what we're doing is, we're creating another department within our city in order to give it the room to expand, and so that department at some point will probably start getting more employees in it. That department will start, this is what I'm, with growth, that's what I'm seeing, is that department would end up growing within our city to operate and give our city a better look.
Right.
At that point, you'll have to have a department ahead.
Right.
Well, if you have a one-member department, I-
It grows, right, it grows, so, okay.
Can I just say or ask something? Y'all said that it's very hard to get volunteers. I heard Jack saying it was hard to get volunteers for the park. We've had trouble in the past with Keep Westwark and Beautiful getting volunteers to help us with different events that we sponsor. So if you're on one committee, can you also be on the Building Standards Commission?
Yeah, and that's why we're talking about it right now, is that we would want to make sure that we didn't, let's say, well, let's say that council says, no, we don't want you to be on multiple committees, or, yeah, that's fine. You know, that can be, somebody on EDC could be on this, somebody on P and Z can be on this, somebody on Keep West- that, that's what we're talking about, is what kind of, what, if that kind of thing looks fine to the council, that's what I want to make sure.
I mean, I would, I would love for it to see on a beach. Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to see, you know, pool from our committees that are, that are current. A council member, and to be honest, I would like to try to, and it may be a tough one, but maybe not, a business owner.
A business owner.
I mean, to me, a business owner has a lot of stake in your city, you know?
I think that's the number, I mean, the-
I would, and I'm, I don't have a vote, we all know that, I'm just speaking out loud and kind of trying to bounce ideas out of my head onto the table. But to me, I think business owners have a really big stake within your, your cities, right? And, and I would like to, to extend that, you know, we've got, we've got business owners, I think, that would probably participate. I mean, and if we just said one, at least one, and maybe it doesn't make it a limit too, but we want, we want to have at least one business.
And there, we could, and if we don't get any answers from a business, we could also work for them at some point, so it doesn't count.
We could, but, but I think it would be really awesome to have a business owner. We've got plenty of businesses in the city, I think we can get that.
Would you, would you structure this commission, just like you do your other boards, and have like, instead of a director or a president, have like the head as the commissioner, and you have a secretary and what have you? Would you do that?
Oh, you'd have a chair, committee members, yeah.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to figure out what kind of vote we need and get, get onto our next items.
So I, I mean, from my standpoint, what I would say is, we need to take a vote on creating the Community Development Department and moving code enforcement into that and out of PD, and then giving that Development Department the authority to continue code enforcement, permits, and then we can, we can look at any, like I said, she's also still doing miscellaneous right now, and I don't think we have to actually specify that, but.
How tough is that going to be for you on the budget to?
Nothing.
Copy, paste, drag, delete.
Copy, paste.
Copy, paste, copy, paste, drag, delete.
Yeah.
If you look at it, it kind of stands alone in its own, so it would honestly-
But the only thing you'd have to go get is your permit stuff.
It's all still all in.
Oh, it isn't, can we do, we did put it in.
That's right, that's right.
So it would, administratively would change, budget-wise, you know, that's, that's my thought.
Change the name of the line.
Yes, we would just change the name, code, code to-
Yes, we would just change the name code, code to, to community development.
I can't say all that she said.
Number one is moving Shannon.
Okay, I want, uh, on item, in her new business B, uh, I'd like to make a motion to create a community development department, moving code enforcement and permits to community development department.
Okay.
A second.
Motion made by Robin, seconded by Jack.
Leon, mine.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin, mine.
Chris Burkett.
Pass across the table. Um, so that takes us to C. Um, you get a motion on that one as well, and sort of goes hand in hand.
You want to call C a commission instead of a committee?
I am, yes. Uh, and it's really the action items to continue development on, and then, you know, you guys, y'all can always reach out to me if you've got thoughts about what you want, so we can, next month, take a, kind of a, at least an outline of what we're wanting to do.
So I make a motion, we create.
A development.
Development. Continue development of building standards commission.
Okay, that we continue development of building standards commission.
Got a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Leon, seconded by Jack. Got votes on that?
Leon, mine.
Jack O'Connell.
Motion passed across the table. That takes us to D. Discussion and undertake action, assigning or removing current check signers.
I have something on that.
On that.
If I am currently a check signer, I would like to be removed. It was just a temporary thing anyway, so go ahead, I don't have a problem with that, so.
I think a lot of this was more brought up because there was confusion with minutes, or minutes not done, minutes not turned in, so we, so the work that we'd done here a while back, it was brought to our attention that that was a temporary thing. If we didn't get this other stuff done, then we weren't gonna have any check signers, essentially.
Well, and Mary needs access now.
Right, yeah, yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna, tell us what you, what we need to do, because we talked about it.
So, we had this letter, don't remember it, signed, probably a lot of members left on it. This was kind of like a temporary order, uh, saying, hey, for the moment, we're doing this. It got, this got turned in, but now that this has been here for a while, we haven't done any official meetings, we never brought it back to remove. We still even have, like, technically still on the account, we still have Annette, we have Jim, we still have some Keep Westwalking Beautiful, which, you know, Mary had talked to me, we kind of need our help, our support to kind of remove some members. So we had to split it up into a couple different line items. So really, this one is going to look at who we currently have, which at the time is, uh, is Jim, Kevin, Robin, and Kim. So if we want to keep Tate, keep, get rid of Tate, add, that's kind of what this point is for. And I don't have access.
So it looks like what we need to do is we would remove Jim, we would remove, remove Robin, and, um, add Mary.
We need to remove Annette.
And, oh, Annette, Annette. So take Jim, Robin, and Annette off, and add Mary.
How many check signers does that?
That gives me enough check signers?
That gives, it would put, uh, me, Kevin, and Kim.
Yeah.
For all of our main accounts.
Yeah, we, we would need one more, to be honest.
I, what I will say is that this is gonna be a, a process, and once we do this, we get the minutes to them, so we get the minutes to them, once they're through, they send us to the bank, they're gonna send us a card for every single account we had, and we'll have to hand sign every account, send it back, so it's gonna be a, a bit of a, because this has not been done, it will, has not been visited.
Gotta get all the signature cards on file.
Yeah, so there's, right now, this, these signatures here are just temporary, so the bank will accept them, but it's not really official, so they kind of want us to push this to be official.
So we have, we need to add another signer. Would, would, would we want to add someone in the office, or? I don't know, we'll tell, we'll tell.
I just need somebody that's available.
I've got who can get her an eye, that's really good.
Do what? Yeah, I'm here, Kevin's readily, readily available. Uh, Kim usually is, just at the moment, not at the moment, but, so, it could stand at the moment, it'd be fine, but it would be nice to have kind of a backup, just in case something.
Who's on, who do we vote for, Mayor Pro Tim?
Chris.
So, so the motion would be, do you see, make a motion, do y'all know what we just discussed?
Make a motion to remove Jim, Robin, and Kim. I'm sorry. And add Mary, and myself.
That, for the city check signing.
Just for all of the city accounts, okay, and then?
I got a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Leon, votes?
Leon, mine.
Jack O'Connell, Robin, mine.
Chris Burkett.
Pass across the table.
Wait, do you need other ones?
No, that is all I need for that line, so the next one.
Item E is discussion and undertake action, verification, removing Keep Westwalking Beautiful bank signers. So kind of the same thing, do we got some names that we need to take off?
For what Mary discussed, it was Jim and David.
David needs to come off.
Yeah, and Jim was still on there, so he would need to come off as well.
Yeah.
So Jim and, Jim and David off, how many signers does that leave you on that account?
That, at that point, it's just Mary and Kim, unless you wanted to add myself, because that's kind of where Kim.
I want to add Sue Ellen Lindsay. We voted her to be a check signer, one of our newbies.
Do you want Mary to back up Kim?
Yeah, yeah, anybody, really, that y'all approve.
So we'll remove Jim and David, and we would be adding Mary and Sue Ellen, right? As my granddaughter.
Yes, sir.
I get a motion for that?
I make a motion, uh, to remove the, remove Jim and David from the Keep Westwalking Beautiful bank signers, and Sue Ellen Lindsay and Mary Chubb.
I'll second this.
Motion made by Robin, seconded by Chris.
Leon, mine.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin, mine.
Chris Burkett.
That takes us to I F, discussion and undertake action on public, proposed new fleet vehicles. Max Stafford, you're up.
Yes, sir. All right, give me just one second. Okay, I think I got my bets in, right? No. There we go, okay. All right, so we have been in desperate need of, updating our fleet of trucks. This is gonna seem a little, little overwhelming, because I wanted to make sure you guys had so many options that would make you sick. So I only had enough paper to make one copy of each truck. So what I was gonna do is kind of divide it up, or you could pass it around and look at it. Um, but these are some trucks that we have in mind, and I'll just, like I said, I'm gonna divide up a few, so you can look at them, so you can see what direction we're trying to take the fleet. Leon, I know better than to give you the most expensive one.
It could be the one you want, that's the one I want.
Well, the mayor has a couple that I think were, would be great for the city, and these are also, they're within our price range, and they're not going to break the bank. Now, I, I did throw a couple of trophies in the back in there, so people can look at.
So you said fleet, how many are we looking at?
So right now, we need to replace five trucks, but we're looking to purchase three. We can afford three. So before I go into the dollar now, I want you to look at the price range that I put in these trucks, and then imagine buying three of those trucks. Now, we're, we're hoping next year, once we pay off some loans to add, to rent the trucks to INS. So these are trucks that are relatively new, within four or five years, um, low mileage, um, they all come with warranty. I was asked not to put any four-by-fours in there, so I did keep everything in two-wheel drive, except for one, I threw one in there, that's my trophy truck, it's a big truck. Uh, but you'll see that these trucks, first of all, they're not a great buy, they're fleet trucks, they've been serviced, they cover the very limited warranty.
Very limited warranty?
Limited. Some have a year, some have ninety days, some have six months.
This one, this one for sure is limited warranty. This, this is one of our trucks right here, and so is that.
From your company?
And so is that one.
So take those trucks out, you told me about.
Those, those trucks came from my company.
Oh, my God.
That is weird, now creep that. All right, so, so I picked all these trucks in, in the hopes of, A, you know, we, we can call them and say, listen, these are the three trucks we want, this is what you're asking, here's our offer, and they will negotiate with us, which is one of the reasons why I picked them. A lot of fleet sales will not negotiate, their price is, is firm, so.
What's the lowest mileage on, on any of these?
Uh, some of them are forty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand miles, and some are a hundred and twenty thousand miles. Well, remember that, I kind of, kind of scared, I knew not to give Leon one of that.
And they're all gas, they're all regular gas?
They're all gas, they're all gas.
They're all single cab too, and I.
No, we got some four doors on here.
Because we don't need a four-by-four, I mean, truly, truly, anything we're doing in our city, we got the fact that we don't have that.
Right, and that was the mayor's thought, we gotta quit.
And to be honest, I mean, it's, it's more expensive to repair.
So interest rates are high, how do we deal with loans on these?
We're not gonna get a loan, we're gonna pay cash.
Oh, I thought you said something about loans.
Well, next year, we would like to put two new trucks in INS, because we just put two new trucks in INS that will pay off pretty quick.
Do you prefer the two-door or the four-door?
I prefer the four, because in a pinch, I can put four guys in that truck, but typically, I don't send four guys to one place, I send one or two guys to any place. So a two-door is efficient.
I didn't see any of the, didn't you find, I thought you had some half tons.
Uh, I took those out, because some of the half tons had no, well, most of the half tons had no warranty. They had a twenty, twenty-three with no warranty, so I'm kind of concerned. Yeah, they're usually, the, the quarter ton, half tons were a hundred and fifty, or sixty thousand miles, and that's a lot of miles for a twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-three. I mean, where are they going?
Those are the ones that you just opened here.
Y'all have something we'll be throwing on this line, playing musical papers.
Do you like the ones with, like, we used to call them the headache racks on?
Well, what we're looking for is pipe racks, because right now, the pipe sitting on the ground, it needs to be on a pipe rack.
But I can't allow us to buy these trucks, I'm just telling you. I know where they came from.
Yeah, but that's just a concern.
I know, when we took them to the airport.
All these trucks are gonna have a story.
You know, that's where I was going, to the airport.
Well, no, that's, I mean, we dropped those off at Enterprise at the airport, and they're, you're seeing them.
Yeah, with the central, yeah.
So, I mean, are, is it safe to just, like, make decisions based on warranty?
Well, it's not necessarily just warranty, I'm, I'm looking for viability, how does it serve us? Like, we need a utility, then we need a pipe rack, so we have everything on the truck when we get to the job site. So there's no running.
I will, I will tell you, and I've already told Michael this, in our fleet, we, we ran Chevys and Fords, um, we tried Dodges on some of the lighter duty trucks, and they were okay. But, uh, historically, we've had the best luck out of Chevy and Ford. But since two thousand nineteen, and this is going on YouTube, so I could probably get a bunch of hate mail, but I'm just telling you what I know my experience has been. Since two thousand nineteen, we've had way more mechanical failures out of our Chevys than we have, have had out of our Fords, right? So the mechanical failures were on the Chevys, the Fords had whatever, you know, the radio don't work, or the air conditioner compressor, or whatever. Well, that's not a transmission or an engine or a rear end or whatever. Um, so, and that's what I told him, you know, and, and I can tell you right now, I was a technician for my company before, and I can tell you, I beat the crap out of my trucks, so I know the guys that are technicians now, they beat the crap out of their trucks. You know, with Paul Hedy Lowes.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I would like to add one caveat to this situation, and that is, you guys know that most of our trucks are ten, fifteen years old, and one of the things I was tasked with is getting us on a rotation, to where every few years, we're rotating trucks out and bringing different trucks in. So I wouldn't look at these, at these trucks as, you know, like in the past, when we kept the truck for thirty-five years for no reason. You know, these trucks are trucks that are gonna get a spot for the next, let's say, four to six years, and slowly are rotated out with different trucks.
Should still be worth something with, before.
Yes, instead of like the trucks we're trying to auction out, you'd, you'd be lucky to get two bucks.
Well, I mean, what I would like to see is, is, and again, I'm taking it out of experience.
Yes, that's one of the ones.
Already heard me say. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel, and with, with my company that I work for, um, we've kind of had to figure out as we went, and we've guided down to a three-year process for the most part, now.
Did you see that one? Because this is actually one of the ones I picked.
Yes.
Did you see this one?
One thing I like about it is it's got six tires to worry about.
I, I know, I know. If attorneys are transferred, we're kidding here.
But, but anyway, um, what we've done is, is we put them on a three-year, and for the most part, we stick with that. If a three-year works out, but if a truck starts giving us some issues, it gets kicked to the road in two years.
And you try to get your value instead of sitting around it and repairing it for twenty years.
You know, I certainly don't have expertise in buying these types of vehicles, but there are so much e, e-shopping for different things, I'm like, I just Google fleet vehicles, and, you know, and stuff.
That was the first thing I did.
Is it, do, do we get anything from looking around?
It's a little risky, well, I've looked around, I've looked at seven different fleets.
Yeah.
This is the one I chose.
Yeah.
The reason I chose them is because of their guarantees and the work and all the stuff.
I didn't know it was just because it was local.
No.
The river is not exactly local.
South of Boston, but then I would have to ride with the mayor to Austin to get them, so I said, that's probably a little too far.
Austin or Boston?
Austin. So anyways, I tried to find something within a, let's call it a hundred mile range, so I wasn't in the truck with the mayor for eight hours.
You like, you don't like him.
He's okay. That's a long ride, that's a lot to talk about. He'll be the one that's gonna have to take this, so.
So will there be an added fee for having a fifty with lights and all that kind of stuff?
There will be, and on average, it's about anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred dollars down to, for public works, I'm sure it would be, it's a lot more than that.
And all rally, we can, they make some really nice plug-in.
Plug-in, yeah.
Lights, I mean, you got one that came off that black Dodge, well, that one that came off that black Dodge is pretty nice, you know?
It's a nice yellow one.
That's all we need.
I like that you like his Bluetooth connectivity too. Do, do most of these have that?
Uh, that's what they're two thousand eighteen had.
Most of the newer ones.
All right, so I'm gonna hold you guys, I'm glad you approve of all twenty-eight trucks. I hope not to get all twenty-eight trucks.
Except the two of these.
Except the two, yes, are these the two trucks I'm thinking of?
With a little tear at the top.
There you go, can't have those trucks.
The one with the grill guard had two transmissions put in it.
Oh, my God.
And the other one had some major engine work that you never want to have.
Well, thank you for entertaining me on this, I'm kind of excited about it. When I do come back to you on the next meeting, I will have it narrowed down to four or five, so you guys can look at it and see if I'm making the right decision.
There's no action to take.
They're gonna be gone by then, aren't they?
I don't, I don't mean, I don't know if there's any action to take, I think we need to have the.
My thought was, is if it's, if it's current monies that we have, we could go out and buy those, as long as you guys agree that we need trucks, and I showed you some examples of the priorities we wanted to be. But I can't come back to the council and readdress, because if you go, I'll try to practice my own attendant school.
Can I ask the council if, if they would give permission to Mayor Pro Tim and myself to give Max some advisement over the next? to give Mike some advisement over the next, whatever, days, weeks, if it's a month, uh, to go ahead and, and work with Mike to advise him.
I appreciate that.
To, uh, to be able to maybe make some purchases on trucks.
The first round of trucks that I was gonna bring to you guys was three months ago, and those trucks were gone.
Yeah, they're gone.
I mean, and that way we could, that way we could put something that was okay here, um, and if I could ask the council.
I'm totally okay with that. I don't want us to be held up.
I would have felt really, you guys are gonna go forward with it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, they have like, with y'all's involvement, to purchase like, up to three vehicles with a price, mileage, whatever you guys wanna do.
I was scared we were gonna do that, so I, I came with a price in mind.
Okay.
One twenty-five.
Well, wait.
Well, it's gonna be under that, but at least with that.
Okay.
In case they say, no, Mike, you need to go with this truck, it's thirty-seven, not twenty-five, then I have some buffer.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's what I would, for council purposes, I would approve them spending up to X amount on this many vehicles, um, or average it, or something like that.
But also encourages us to try to, you know, bring that total price down, because we're getting multiple vehicles.
The lights and all the stuff is gonna be over and above that, though?
No, it'll, it'll be separately, it will not be over and above that, I, I made sure to give us a, a buffer, just in case.
Yeah, I mean, because I saw, I mean, I didn't look at all of them, but I saw twenty-five K is kind of the average price on most of them?
Twenty-five to thirty-three was the average, now, there were about seven or eight that were thirty-three, I think one was forty-two, something like that.
Because that's about a hundred K.
How much would a brand new vehicle?
Well, that's what's scary, and that's why I need to put them in I N S next year, because brand new, you know, the two new ones we just got are no longer, we can't get fleet trucks at that price. Right now, it's averaging fifty thousand plus, so, oh, it's higher.
Not for, not for what you just showed.
Yeah, the, the two fifty.
We're paying, we're paying seventy.
We bought the two fifty for fifty-two, and then the other one for thirty-nine.
I think, I think we just bought five, five, uh, one-ton Fords, and I think that they were seventy-two.
Ooh, well, then we might have to go back to this option again, and just.
Because they have the bids on them?
Yeah.
Uh, can we get sort of a motion, I mean, I, the amount, that needs to be discussed with council, I, I agree, it does need the amount that would be allowable up to, but I would, I would, I would ask that if the council would, would give kind of direction or permission to Mayor Pro Tim, myself, to work with Michael on these, to, I guess, I would like for us to be his liaisons to, uh, to make these decisions as a group, rather than just say, okay, we'll give you this much money, go buy them.
Whatever.
That way, that way, there is some shared responsibility, as long as Mayor Pro Tim's good with sharing that responsibility. Um, I, I would like us to do that as a, as a.
I think that's fine, but I still think you guys need to set some parameters right now.
There needs to be an amount, and I, and I think, maybe we don't need to buy a truck with more than eighty thousand miles on it. Yeah.
That didn't, that cut you all the way down.
That cut a third.
I'm just saying.
I, I agree, yeah.
I mean, what were, were there any at sixty K?
There were, there were, there was a third of the trucks were over a hundred thousand, and.
It's hard to find them.
And the goal for public works is to try to get a truck that was at least a hundred thousand or less in mileage. Because once you get over a hundred thousand, everything starts going wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Can we, we, has anybody got some kind of creative motion, or?
I may need your help, Lee. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, for the proposed new vehicles for public works, to have discussion between the mayor and the mayor pro Tim, and, and add it as a caveat onto the end of that, and then bring that back to the council for approval and discussion, does that sound okay?
Well, is that what y'all are wanting to do? Because my understanding was that his timeline to buy things is really short.
We would have to have the second meeting, we're saying.
That part scares me, because like you, like you're saying, uh, that.
Vehicles may come.
That'd be God, though, obviously.
So we need to give approval to the mayor, to Mike, how, how do I want this?
Um, so I don't know what numbers y'all are talking about, so I'm just gonna make this.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's pretty, I was gonna say a hundred, because if you're averaging thirty-three, uh, because that's not six.
So that's what I was, that was thinking, I would say that.
Do your, do your average at thirty-five thousand.
Because your one twenty-five is gonna get you.
Do, do your average at thirty-five thousand, that's one of five.
Yeah, because you still have to do the sticker, the lights and all that, and that'll give you closure.
The registration, right.
Well, that way you can put some, some safety stuff.
Yeah, that's smart, man.
Okay, so what are we? I mean, but you know, I didn't look closely, if you are averaging thirty-five thousand, or is that gonna get you what you need in one?
I believe it will, uh, but I need to reconfirm that those prices are under the hundred thousand.
Yeah, so that's what I would say, is that you would be making a motion to approve, uh, that public works be able to purchase with consultation of Chris and our mayor, Kevin.
I like how she said no.
I was like, oh. With consultation of an amount for three vehicles, not to exceed a hundred and five thousand total for all three, and no vehicle to have over a hundred thousand miles.
No worries.
It's a little word.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for public works to purchase, correct, that's what you said, three new vehicles with less than, with a hundred thousand miles or less, at a, for a total of a hundred and five thousand dollars, and to consult with the mayor, Kevin, and the mayor pro Tim.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I got a second for that motion?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Leon, folks.
What happens if you don't buy three?
If we buy two, well, then the residual money stays in the bank.
So that it doesn't go to fifty thousand each vehicle?
Cannot, no, 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 we already agreed.
Uh, Jackal Pono, Rod Martin.
Chris Burkett.
Passed across the table.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, okay, so that takes us to item G, discussion to take action on new fleet vehicles, John Alveson. The chief.
You're right.
You got pictures too?
Yeah, my presentation here, so I'll look and see.
But what if Kevin's company sold one?
No, I don't believe that.
No, it might have no mileage on them. Nobody's ever, of course, the.
So Defender sells it, and the base model, big Tahoe, is six thousand two thousand. The Enterprise, we sell huge ones, we got thirty-five thousand, or it's fifty-eight thousand for it. Get thirty-five thousand miles on it. And a company out of Austin wants fifty-four thousand for a twenty twenty-four Tahoe, with no miles. And Doug at, uh, Reliable Chevrolet, he's got three black twenty twenty-four Tahos with no miles, fifty-two. They don't come with lights or nothing, but all the lights in the other Tahoe that would fit in there are the, uh, Silverado P P B, police pursuit pickup truck, is three hundred dollars cheaper than the Tahoe.
And you're buying it, right?
No, that's one time, yes. The Chargers paid for it this year, and, or in the next one, and the first payment went until twenty twenty-six, but. I'll just talk about one vehicle. Yeah, the other one, they're in for the, uh, Chargers, and.
Well, the slicktop's got a hundred and.
We still have this one for.
A hundred and three thousand.
Yeah, the slicktop's got a hundred thousand.
The Tahoe's got a hundred and forty-four, for three and a half years.
No, I know, I'm just saying, it's.
Transmission's been replaced, the top half of the motor's been rebuilt, and the bottom half. I've seen.
I was only bringing that up because at some point.
Sixteen thousand so far, a tear on that Tahoe.
Around the corner. That's the only, that's the only thing I brought it up, because around the corner, there isn't, you know. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess, I guess to Leon.
There you go.
To Leon's question, to make a point, are we sure that, like, the slicktop is not something that we need to start looking to put out to pasture? I mean, that's why you were asking, I'm sure, right, Leon, you kind of know what the fleet is too, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, that, well, that, those, that slicktop, it, it just, I'm sorry, it doesn't have a light bar on top of it.
They only want a light bar.
Yeah, it doesn't have a light bar on top of it, they're all black, they're all black Chargers, the three Chargers are all black, but two of them have a light bar on them, and one doesn't, so they refer to it as the slicktop. But.
One's at Reliable Chevrolet, he's got three of them left, and he said after October, whenever anybody, you won't have them no more, he's got four of the pickups. And he said that'll be gone, and then they're gonna go up to the sixty thousand and stuff for the twenty-four.
The only issue, I think, probably, the chief would be, is if we were to try to do something and, and replace the, uh, car without a light bar on the top of it.
Yeah, I know, you can't. I didn't know, you never told us.
With one of those cars, it would be the outfitting, right, because your patrol vehicles are outfitted quite a bit more expensive than yours.
We could take most of it out of the Charger, and the camera system, the computer system, most of the lighting, the only one that wouldn't fit is the cage and console, but, uh, Defender, they go all the way up to eighty-seven thousand, everything on there.
Oh, yeah, I know, I've seen that, yeah, I've seen that, it gets, gets.
And you can get just a few lights, and that's for sixty-two, or you can keep going and going, and that's what you get through.
So what are you?
What do you, what do you want? And you can have what they wanted, which one was.
Yeah, well, it depends, well. I would rather have the, the, uh, new car, it's sixty-two, five hundred and fifty.
That's with no mine.
Yep. Hundred thousand mile warranty.
Of course, and at the moment, that one doesn't have any police rigging on it, but that would be something we'd have to figure out.
Well, none of them would, right?
No, well, no, not unless you go with, what is it, Defender, they, oh yeah, they'll give you one for eighty-seven thousand, fully rigged out.
You prefer the Tahoe. And then just outfit it yourself.
And the pickup truck is.
Three hundred bucks cheaper.
Eighty-two thousand, four hundred.
But some of the stuff off the car now, what's on that Tahoe?
Yeah, and the Tahoe, they're coming with the original lights in the back of it, and in the front, that's why it's not one.
I wouldn't.
So what are you gonna do at the end, this, this other one?
Uh, auction it off. And what's he thinking he can do that? Uh, looking on the line, and who, uh, likes to sell used cars? Around eleven thousand.
I think that open brought.
An open brought, what, twenty-four?
Yeah.
For thirty-five dollars, you can get a Z flash, I would imagine, like all the lights. Oh, thank you, Doc.
Well, the Tahoe comes with flashing headlights, flashing bright lights, and.
It already has a Z flasher.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I think that's something they put in the P P Vs already. Um, I mean, this, this is something we need to keep trying to look at, Chief, or?
Didn't know?
After, uh, October, we'll all have to probably get more quotes, because those will probably be held on.
Well, I mean, with it being I N S, I, I, I mean, I think we're gonna have to look at, making sure that we can put this in I N S right now.
We don't already got it, but I think that's the problem.
Yeah, so, so we may have to check into making sure, so maybe we can check into that, and then by this next meeting at least.
We make a motion with it, as long as it's in I N S, that.
Well, yeah. All right, we're gonna have some more meetings, we may be able to find out within the next three, four days.
Okay.
Yeah, we could amend it.
Um, have you done those agendas already, for all of our next meetings?
But I mean, that, that means we're gonna have to wait another month?
Well, but you said it's an addendum to the agenda.
Oh, yeah, because it's not timed out.
Right, because that, that particular item wouldn't be timed out.
We can add to an agenda that's already posted? We'll check into that, but.
Ordinarily, I would amend it, but.
We'll check in, we'll check into that, but I really would like for us to make sure that we can get this into I N S.
Would it go into this budget I N S, or would it go into next budget I N S, because it's not the year of the twenty twenty-six budget?
Of course. Two to one per second, that is.
Yeah, I don't either, so I don't, I don't, I don't know that maybe.
Maybe we've done that out front.
Government capital?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Thank you.
I tried calling them, but it's not on the.
Yeah, we'll have to get with government capital, we can check, handle that, and.
Yeah, well, they won't listen to me, and they won't.
Did you already, did you already create the agenda for the one, the twenty-fourth, and posted it?
It was about budget and tax rate, it was very simple.
She's all about it.
Okay, so.
Hey, sorry, I have one, if they don't like it.
We do, and actually post a second meeting notice, and just say it starts at seven, that's actually what you can do.
Yeah.
Like, the first one is, that's what we do.
Yeah.
It's just an addition.
So we'll, we will find out, guys, we'll find out, and we'll just throw another agenda out.
Yeah, that's what we can do.
Yeah, we'll just throw another agenda out, and this will be the only thing on that agenda.
Yeah, I said I have an additional meeting on twenty-fourth.
Right, it just started, you know, thirty minutes later than the other one, it's just a second meeting.
Yeah, but we don't wanna hold him up, so whatever y'all, we need to decide.
Well, we'll, we'll know, we'll know within this.
We'll know before October, which is his.
Oh, yeah, and we'll, we'll know that quote was good until October, right?
If, if it's still there.
Yeah, they've been there.
That's why I was like, we don't wanna hold him up.
They've been there a little while, but, I mean, I'm hoping they'll still be there, but we've got to figure out this I N S.
And we can find out from government capital, and we're gonna cut this.
Most departments are waiting up to two years to get a vehicle.
Keep it, keep a finger on it, Chief.
A motion that says, he can go ahead and do it if we find out it's in the I N S.
Yeah, that's, so we don't hold him up.
Without having to have another meet, that he can go ahead and buy it if it's in, if she can find out if it's in there.
Yeah, I don't know why you couldn't, it's kind of like the same thing we just did, the other side, so.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
But, but we need to specify what vehicle, because there's two vehicles too.
Which one he wants, the Tahoe, he wants the Dodge or Tahoe?
Well, I hear you're a test driver, both of them.
Well, I'll say, I'll say, I'll say this.
Car nine, and you're gonna put this one.
I'll say this as, as advice, and I heard him say that the Tahoe had red and blues already on it with a spotlight, and the truck didn't, I don't know if that's worth anything to anybody here.
Sure, it's worth a lot to me.
But I don't have, I don't have a vote, I'm just putting it out there.
No trouble.
Fifty-two.
Well, the truck does have its P P Bs, it's got the new package, you know, with the spotlights, flashing headlights, and taillights.
So, and they were like the same price, weren't they?
And the pickup's, uh, a hundred dollars cheaper.
Did they do the same thing, like, oh?
Yeah, so good cap, so what, number four cap, yeah. Because if I wanna get all my stuff, that means I gotta get out and walk into the bed, go around the truck.
Okay, he prefers to, uh, just crawl up the seat.
Are you being able to carry all your gear in the pickup?
He's not going in the pickup.
I say.
He wants the Tahoe.
Oh, what's on that?
I give you sixty thousand dollars.
He's trying to put a cap on it.
I mean, did the person?
Hey, John?
They do.
You have a brand new car?
Yeah, not necessarily.
Yeah.
Yeah, he.
And you guys didn't have a. You guys didn't have a brand new car?
He had it, so that would really send it somewhere.
Well, she was not a cap. Said, no, I bought my truck in Missouri, and they shipped it down here to you.
Chief, do you think you'd be able to get them to put any kind of equipment on there if needed?
Who's it coming from?
Reliable Chevrolet, now they, now you don't want it out, so.
I know, but, but, but what I'm saying is, you can, if we, if we say there's a cap, and, and you tell them, hey, can you have this, this, and this put on there to make it, I mean, if we're doing something, we'll be better than what we are now, right, that's what we, my motto is.
It goes in range, yeah.
My motto is be better today than you were, than you were yesterday.
So we just cap in that, whatever, he doesn't have to have it done there, he can take it.
Yeah, okay, and sixty is a good number?
I mean, that, the truck, the truck was fifty-four?
Yeah.
Fifty, so, yeah, I mean, if we, if we say sixty, and then that gives you some money to buy outfitting lights and all that stuff.
You're comfortable with that? Alright, so I make a motion for Chief to purchase a vehicle up to sixty K. Uh, once we learn it's part of I N S, which will happen in the next few days, so he is not restricted from buying the vehicle ones.
I'll say it. Motion made by Jack, seconded by Leon. Motion made by Jack, seconded by Leon.
Leon Meyer.
Oh, Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
Passed across the table.
Always saying whatever, man.
Okay, um, that takes us to item H, budget workshop. We just listed this on here, guys, in case we needed it. I don't think we do. Um, so we're gonna move past that to number two, citizen input on non-agenda related items. Do we have anybody that has citizen input with non-agenda related items?
I think I'll turn the one in.
Okay, yep. Um, okay, so Mr. Bob, Bob Roden?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My name is Bob Roden. I live at three hundred telephone road, ten years. I moved here in two thousand eleven, uh, till two thousand twenty-four. I'm still here. My original house turned down in two thousand nineteen and I replaced it a year later. Uh, came to live in this area, in the Wackley area, lots of city, okay? One of the problems I've had lately, though, is we've got a guy that moved through the N B street on route who is running a business basically out of the residential area, okay? He's running a dump truck, sand and gravel, so, so, uh, city center in Three Point, uh, running C B R sand and gravel. What's happened now is years ago I was the only one that came in when I first moved in here. At that time we had White Rock roads and stuff, but completely against E K standards. And then I had to come in here and I had to bike to get the road that I had now put in on telephone road. So we, some, some kind of better standards. That's the time that the city could afford. Now what's happening is within the years time that he'd been here, the roads had gotten so bad that he paddles every morning at four thirty-five o'clock in the morning on telephone road, uh, point and down the trail, which he splits up today, and he does on those that were getting big grunts and big potholes in, in the streets, okay? Go around Three Point, he's having to turn so wide, that's actually creating grunts in the street and he's hitting one of the neighbor's little marker poles that, you know, for his property lines and stuff, and breaking those every time he goes around it. So basically what I'm wanting to do is absolutely fix him about, you know, the dump truck service and maybe storing his vehicles at other places, because y'all already have an ordinance in place, uh, for oversized vehicle storage and operation businesses in a residential area. Residential area is done or means a single-family dwelling home, a multi-purpose family home, or a planned development or something of that nature, and some of your family going medically. Well, that's not where he's running this at. If you start off with one dump truck, now he's running two, two or three out there, it was increasing. And all that's doing is increasing, increasing the traffic on the road. I, I'm, you know, I don't got a car anymore. I got one little bike and stuff, basically. I can't go down that road and list the potholes on that little bike and stir around them. There's some, and then kind of get lost in those and the dogs on the roads as well, you know, it's almost an impossibility, uh, to do that. So, I mean, I, I'm not against anybody having a business and kind of running it on the weather. I am against someone coming in and tearing the roads up and nothing being done about it, you know? And, I mean, it's just, it's gotten out of hand with that down there, you know, somebody needs fixing. I spoke with a lady earlier yesterday after the water department, she didn't, uh, citizens platform, which I filled out, which I'll turn into her or whoever I need to later on, but it lists the ordinance about, it says, operation storage of the dump trucks, sand and pedal business, residential zone, paddling business, uh, and it's got the ordinance, I put the ordinance in it down here and the evidence or preliminary evidence saying that citizens, you know, one, that's already getting off traffic and regulations.
Sir, I don't, I don't mean to, to be rude in any way, but I mean, as far as the way this is, is, is we're limited to three minutes.
All right.
Um, I, I did allow you to go a little bit past that, but we appreciate you voicing your concerns and, and everybody here heard you. So, thank you.